I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be real quick, everybody wants to get out and enjoy the day. We had a check returned or given back to us for ACH, and that was if we remember, we entered into agreement with the ACH company. It was $229,000 the first year. That was that pool of money. So, we got $86,387 back. So, they saved us, let me look here. 142,612 we spent, and that was from February 17th to December of 31st. And that was off-site and pharmaceutical. So, just to give you a little history, before we entered into this, we say we were spending about $15,000 a month.
I think they're getting a robo-call.
So, we were spending about $15,000 a month on pharmaceutical, and probably 300, it's hard not to laugh here, so around $350,000 on going off-site, so approximately $500,000. So, I want to tell you that entering into that agreement, a good decision by the board, and I think you'll see this, this $86,000, I'm gonna give it to you Dennis, and you can, I don't need it, do I? Because there's nothing we can be able to do with it.
Do we gotta move to have Dennis receive it?
I'm gonna give it to Michelle. That is right there who I'm gonna give it to. And it has a little, whatever we have to do with it. So, I'm gonna give it to Michelle. I don't want to hang with it, because I'd be the guy that loses it. Okay. And, but, so, I wanted to bring that up. The one thing that we did want to bring up as something that the nurses are requesting, and maybe we could use a small portion, we were thinking maybe if we could get $20,000, this is what we need. We need first aid kits for our squad cars. And we need a nurses' mobile equipment station that does their blood pressure. We don't have enough time to bring everybody to the medical center, so if we had that cart to go around and do all those things, the nurses said that would help them. It's not that much. 10 D-FIBs, first aid kits for all the squad cars, and the nurses' mobile, we're talking maybe 20 grand. So, if that's possible to use any of that, however you decide on that, I don't know how that works, that's Dennis' expertise, but we wanted to bring that up, and we're hoping that we can make that work. But, I just really, kudos to everybody, because this is a deal that saves for the county. It's been a better deal for us. Okay?
I'll move to receive that.
Second. And thank the sheriff's office for their partnership in bringing in ACH, that was a good deal.
Moved by Raddick, second by Taylor. I'll call a vote. Are there all in favor, I guess?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other citizen concerns? All right, then, move on to number two, approval of the agenda, I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Raddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Consent agenda, items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action, items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number three, approval of the minutes of the May 8th, 2018 meeting. Number four, approval of claims. Number five, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcels 894312251005 and 894312251004, also known as 414 Front Street and orderly 10 feet of Lot 8, setting for Tuesday, May 29th at 4:35 PM. Item number six, from County Treasurer Mike Clayton, approval of resolution for tax abatement for initials JM. Number seven, A, from our Human Resources Director, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Seven B is authorization to initiate the hiring process. Seven C, action on the renewal of Woodbury County's life insurance with Lincoln Financial. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And item eight, presentation of a resolution thanking and commending Dennis Wilson for his years of service with Woodbury County. Do I read it first, or should we move it first here? It's already done, all right, so, we'll meet with Dennis right up here. Dennis, this is for you, I'll read this here. "It's a resolution thanking and commending Dennis Wilson for his service to Woodbury County. Whereas Dennis Wilson has capably served Woodbury County as an employee of the sheriff's office for 27 years, from October 16th, 1991 to May 31st, 2018. And whereas the service given by Dennis Wilson as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisor of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of this board thank and commend Dennis Wilson for his service, years of service to Woodbury County. And be it further resolved that this is the wish of those signing below, that the future only hold the best for this very deserving person, Dennis Wilson. Thank you very much, Dennis." Thank you very much.
It's scary now, because Denny was huge in keeping our jail population down. He worked tirelessly, tirelessly to keep the numbers manageable. They completed, but he wants to golf and do all that other stuff, so, it, he's gonna be sorely missed, because he was one of the main components in tackling our numbers, so it's uncharted waters right now.
Mr. Chair, this was on for action, is that just an error, then?
Yeah, that's why I asked if we needed a motion. Okay. No, no action. Number nine is an informational item from Community Economic Development Director David Gleiser, it's our quarterly update on Simcoe and City County Membership Dues Project.
Good evening, David Gleiser, Community Economic Development Director. I invited Michelle Boston-Los, Executive Director of Simcoe, to help provide the quarterly update for the third quarter. If you remember, back in November, we, I'm sorry, September, the board accepted their proposal from Simcoe to pay 50% of the membership dues for communities in rural Woodbury County that wanted to take advantage of their technical assistance offerings. We budgeted 70, close to $7,300. 12 cities did accept the offer. Because we started a little bit later in the fiscal year, we had two cities initially not want to join, but then later towards the end of the year, calendar year, they decided to join. So, ultimately, 12 cities are participating at the county's share of $5,932. The only communities in rural Woodbury County that are not participating are Sloan and Pearson. And with that, I'll let Michelle provide the board with an update.
Hello?
Hello?
I'll just kind of walk through the report, just kind of pulling out some key things, and then you guys can ask questions, same format that we've done here for a while. Third quarter, we estimated that we spent 154 direct hours, that equals approximately $10,472 assisting member communities in Woodbury County. Indirect time, as you kind of, you guys remember, I did throw that in there a while ago, because I think there's a lot of things that we do indirectly that help Woodbury County communities. So, we were heavy on the indirect time this time. I estimate 381 hours, and that's a value of about $25,908. So, if you add those two together, it's about $36,380 of benefit during the third quarter. I would say indirect time went up, because we were working hard on that Highway 20 study, and you heard the announcement we made at our annual meeting on last week, that we did receive the $25,000 from the USEDA to go ahead and conduct that study, and so we're gonna have our first kickoff meeting on May 23rd in Correctionville. Invited all the communities along the corridor, and it's kind of branched out from there as well, so we're gonna be having that. So, we spent a lot of time talking to the communities, working on the grant, getting buy-in from everyone. Other things that we did, we hosted a regional workshop in March, and several of the communities were in attendance in Woodbury County, but, you know, it was just kind of an introduction of what is Simcoe, and what do we do, and how do you get involved, and here are things that we can help you with. We got really a lot of great feedback from our members on that, and we will do it again. We held it at WIT here in Sioux City. One feedback that we had is that if we could possibly move it around, so maybe next year we have it in another place, tend to get people drawing, depending on where we have it. But, I think we had like three or four Woodbury County communities at that event, so that was a good one, that we'll, we'll probably do it every year, probably in March is a good time to have it. The other thing with the legislative advocacy that we do, we had monthly meetings at Simcoe, our legislative group, our members are always invited to participate in that or provide us feedback, spent time in Des Moines, spent time in Washington, and trying to advocate the programs that our communities use, for example, CDVG is the one that we really advocated. But, there's other ones out there too, USDA, EDA, programs like that. And then also, I think I mentioned at the last MPO meeting, but, you know, we are still working with the consultant on doing some of those model scenarios, that running up numbers from the IJR, so spent time working with that, and I'm hoping that soon we'll have a stakeholder meeting so that we can kind of go back through those numbers. Other things, I guess I'll kind of point out, and I'm flipping over to page two, and I probably said some of these, but, some of the things I might have missed is that we did help sponsor the Midstates Community Economic Development Conference that was held in April, and so I know David sits on that committee as well. We had several of our communities at that one as well, and it gives opportunity for networking and for communities to hear about rural economic development, and what they can do to increase that in their communities. Other things here, we do still have our Housing Trust Fund. We spent approximately 20 hours working with homeowners on housing rehab projects in Correctionville, Bronson, Mowville, and Cushing, all have projects going on. The grant writing, we are busy doing grants for our communities, that's a lot of reasons why they join, is they want us to write grants for them, which is fine, and we're happy to do that. We assisted, well, we have Mowville, Lawton, and Correctionville were successful at receiving transportation alternative grant programs through our RPA, or SULAN Regional Transportation Planning Association. And we also assisted Anthem, Danbury, and Salix on MURD grants, so those are gonna get announced tomorrow, which communities were awarded for the MURD grants. Assisted Correctionville with a CDVG grant for housing. And then also, grants, unfortunately, they all don't get funded, but we did help Correctionville with a Community Catalyst Grant, and Mowville with Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities Grant. So, you know, I kind of tell the communities, you apply for as many grants you can, you're not gonna win all of them, but if you don't get it, then, you know, you work off of that one, and you submit it again. So, we tried to get them all, but they don't always happen. Other things, we had our, as I mentioned, we had our annual meeting last week, and we invited all of our members, the Iowa DOT Director was there, so our members were invited, opportunity to come in and meet him and be part of that. Kind of looking through my list here, see what else I want to highlight for you. And as you know, Sergeant Bluff is part of our Metropolitan Planning Organization, so they kind of get, they're part of our Transportation Improvement Program, part of our activities that we do at the MPO level, so that's included in there. Other things, I think looking into the fourth quarter, what we can anticipate on is that right now is a busy time with the MPO, so we finished up our Transportation Improvement Program, our budget for next year, anticipate the IJR Technical Committee, our Tri-State Incident Management Committee, and our Bike and Ped Committee is busy. I know Sergeant Bluff, they're doing a lot with the Safe Rest in School Program with trails and sidewalk improvements in Sergeant Bluff. Also, working with Lawton, Bronson, and Mowville, also on Safe Rest in School projects. Like I mentioned, the Highway 20 study, we'll start working on that. And, oh, the other thing I would do want to mention is our Grow SULAN Task Force meeting, that was actually a committee started by the county here, and now Simcoe is leading the way with it. Our last meeting, we had a discussion about a regional housing study, and what that study would look like, and what the scope would be. I think that's a comment we get a lot from a lot of our communities, is that there just isn't enough housing, and how do we address that? Right now, the Grow SULAN Task Force is kind of concentrating on that I-29 corridor, so they're kind of developing what they want it to look like, and how it will, you know, what the scope is, and what they want to study, but I think it's a good opportunity to again, have another region-wide study, that's really kind of getting a picture of what's going on in the region. And I think otherwise, if you flip to page five, I threw this in here, I think at the last meeting, about challenges and opportunities, I will say, one of our challenges that we still have is still waiting for comprehensive plans to be complete. Sometimes it's hard to work with communities when we're not, they're not sure what their priorities are, and what projects they want to do, when working with Correctionville and the CDVG, you have to show that the project is part of a comprehensive plan, and so we needed that plan approval, and plan done, so getting those plans done is important, and they need to kind of keep pushing forward on those to get those done. I always say communication's always a challenge, a lot of times, you know, the city councils, they only meet once a month, and so making sure we catch them, and keeping that communication, getting those clerks, and kind of going back and forth. Sometimes emails just kind of fly back and forth, and we just have to get on the phone and say, hey, what's going on over there? And then applying for grants, like I said, we love to apply for grants, but we need communities to give us direction, like we, give us a clear, like, we want to, you know, build a new swimming pool, and we have an engineer, and here's the cost estimate, we kind of need those basic facts laid out in front of us before we can help with a grant, so it's getting it to that point that we can actually apply for it. Opportunities, the Highway 20 study, everyone should be involved in that, especially all the communities along the corridor, our enemy, which we already had. And then, you know, plenty of grant opportunities on our website, right now, grants are kind of, there's a ton of them going on right now, so anyone who's interested in grants should be hitting our website and looking at them, and calling us up. And then also, the other thing that I think that a lot of our members could be utilizing, but maybe they don't, and some of it might be us making sure that we're communicating that, is GIS services. We do offer GIS services, and a lot of the communities might have old maps, land use maps, zoning map, utility maps, and they're in paper format, and we can get those into a digital format for them. And so, something that, you know, we can start communicating with the cities, but something I think that we've had some other communities look at and start doing, and they've been really happy with it, and I think that this is a service that we can start maybe encouraging. Otherwise, I think that's about it. The end is just kind of a table there at the end, that lists all the hours for each one of the communities. You know, sometimes one quarter might be really heavy for one community and one won't, depending on what's going on, what project they have going on, what grant application. I think all of them, you'll see by the end of the year, had spent maybe their fair share or their worth of services. So, is there anything I can answer?
I just want to thank you for the, participating in bringing that Highway 20 study to fruition. You know, that was something I really wanted to see happen, and I was kind of glad that Simcoe was able to take the reins and do that, especially they do all the heavy lifting for us all, you know.
Yeah. We just have the hard work right now in front of us, so.
That's right.
We're just gonna start writing the plan, and we told the EDA we'd finish it by December, and the highway's supposed to be done by, I guess when we were in DC, they were telling us that it should be done by the end of October.
I heard November, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyhow, I think it'll hopefully, you know, line up nicely, that the study's done the same time the highway's done. So, but I think we have some heavy lifting right now to get the study done in that amount of time.
And I did want to bring up too, how important, you know, to companies that seeing those comprehensive plans for small communities, that it is important, you know, for people that want to maybe relocate here, to know that we're at least forward-thinking and planning ahead for growth and development, and seeing what those communities need. Did you have something to add? I did also have one else.
Quickly, so you mentioned a couple of communities, Sloan was one of them, that currently are not taking.
Yeah.
If a community is in that situation, can they come to Simcoe and say, look, we have this grant that we want to do, and it'll be on a per-cost or fee basis?
Yeah, yeah, usually what we do is then we'll give them an hourly rate, that's not, like, we have an hourly rate for members and one for non-members, so if they set a project they want us to work on or grant, it would just, you know, be on a hourly rate.
Okay.
Yeah, non-member hourly rate, yeah.
Thank you.
Is assistance with grant writing the number-one reason a community would ask you to come to their city council meeting, if they do?
It seems like that is the most popular reason of why they become members, is because they want us to write grants, which is great, but to me, that's kind of a small fraction of what we do, and, you know, if, if that, if, and writing grants is great, and it feels really great when we get them, and it improves the community, but I think that's a good introduction to us for communities, so we write a grant for them, they get to know us, they find out we do a heck of a lot more than just writing grants. So, you know, a lot of times, we don't charge any extra for writing grants, it'll just come out of their membership dues, and so there's, you know, there's really no, I can tell you, the time we spend writing grants and what they pay as the membership dues, we spend a lot more probably time than, than the dues really cover, so, you know, it's just, it's a good, it's a good deal for them, for them to do that, yeah. So, so grant writing, it's probably the number-one thing that we get called about, or why people like join, and then they find out other things we do.
And I did want to bring up something too, while we got Conservation Director and Simcoe here, maybe looking at a river trail idea that goes from, I mean, they pursued this in the past on a canoe trail, but, you know, kayaking, paddleboarding, a little more popular now, recreational activities, and, you know, maybe going from Cherokee down to, you know, southeastern Woodbury County.
Yeah, I wonder, you know, I was studying it, but I'm not, you know, we had done some collection of data for it.
Well, John, that's still in the works, it's just kind of really clawed down the funding, so.
Well, it doesn't take much to do it, you know, funding-wise, actually, just marketing, letting people know it exists, you know, because.
I think some of it, you know, they were looking at access points into the river, some of them, there's, you know, a high erosion that's happening.
Sure.
And so, you know, you have to make sure that you have good access down into the river, and then letting people know when you can get out, and then when you can get in, and some of those stuff. So, there is some funding, I think, in terms of.
Putting a sign up that says.
Putting a sign, maybe putting like a cement pad, or, you know, or something, you know, to, in some parking area, and.
Well, you wouldn't need a cement pad on kayaks or anything.
No, but, you know, sometimes, you know, depends on what you have.
They consider that a water trail, and they designate it as a state water trail, so to do that, they have to have a sign, they have to have the proper access, so it's not just put the sign up, they'll sure, they do the marketing, so. And that started from Clay County all the way down through Sioux City, and that's still in the works, and they're looking at the Big Sioux River as well, so I know that's, they're looking at the COGS to work with those.
So, is it Iowa DNR that we need to be pushing on that?
Yeah, they're the ones that were kind of promoting state water trails, getting them marked.
They had the money to do the marketing and the advertising, but that's hit a snag.
So, how many years has that been snagged?
Last year and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, we were collecting some data for them, it's probably going on like two or three years that we had collected data for them on that, so.
All right.
Yeah, so it is good of thought, because it's in progress, but just a little held up.
Okay, and I guess, sorry, that was a little diversion from the quarterly update, any other questions on that?
The only thing I would want to add is that, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do this, this year with this project, is to get the cities to understand the value in participating in Simcoe, like at a committee level or a board level, and trying to get some of those council members to be able to take the time to, you know, sit on some of Simcoe's committees and boards, and be more involved in the organization. So, besides that, I think some of the highlights, the biggest highlights were obviously the awards with the TAP grant, and there was a lot of excitement in Correctionville with the submission of the.
The CDVG, or the Community Catalyst Grant?
The Community Catalyst Grant. And from what I understand, it was a really competitive, it was the first time that the states ever issued this grant, or put it out there, and it was pretty competitive, but the good thing is, is that none of the momentum that was generated has dwindled the energy, and Correctionville's still pretty strong for the project that we submitted, so that was good. And I think it was really a good thing for the new state DOT Director to be at the annual meeting and to be in the region. I know he's been here once, at least once this year, for the Chambers Transportation Committee, but I really like the fact that he's been, you know, here in Woodbury County twice this year, and is getting a chance to know some of the communities, and he's a former planner, and familiar with the COGS work, and so, that's about it.
I always, and I tell my, I tell the members this, I always compare Simcoe membership kind of like to a gym membership, so you can pay for it and not go, and you're not gonna see results, right? Or you can pay for it and be involved and see results at the end. So, you know, there's a little bit of give and take, and we're there, and we're there for our communities, and we do our best to reach out to them, but they need to get involved too, and, you know, be involved and come to things, and be at things, and you're gonna see bigger results at the end. So, and some of them are stepping up and doing that, and we just keep encouraging, encouraging them. They're probably getting sick of me, because I send them too many emails and invites and whatnot, but they know the doors are always open for them to come in and get involved at any point, so. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Congratulations Supervisor Ung.
Thanks, David.
Now, I kind of feel a little more self-conscious about that gym membership I didn't use. Did you have something else to you?
I never use mine, so.
Okay, I didn't.
And for the good of the public, Supervisor Ung and his wife had a baby, so just so you know, a little bit of the congratulations.
Thank you, Jeremy. It was a bit of a scale with five days in the NICU, but first day home today, and very thankful. I will say, I still will post and share political things on social media, but I can see why many other elected officials choose to only post and share pictures of kids, because everyone loves a cute baby. Something I've noticed.
All right. So, moving on there, number 10, Board of Supervisors, Jerry M. Taylor has brought up a, 10A Authra's Chairman to sign MOU between Rolling Hills and Woodbury County, conditional acceptance into Rolling Hills region, that is an action item. I will go ahead and move it first, and then we can discuss.
I'll second. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, as you know, Woodbury County has sought to join Rolling Hills, and with the fifth county board voting affirmatively, which we think is great news for the future of mental health services in Woodbury County, this now comes before this board in order to take action. As you undoubtedly know, this is an MOU to be effective July 1st of 2019. I'm not gonna read the whole thing for the sake of time, but I will give you three or four highlights. And part of that, you will hopefully appreciate all of the forward planning that has to happen, including the budgeting process, as one of the reasons that I think was a very thoughtful, vetted process by those seven county boards, including those two that dissented. I think they were actually very helpful along those lines in the process. Some of the highlights include a funding commitment to keep Woodbury County's anticipated reserve levels on par with Rolling Hills' members' anticipated reserve balance at the end of FY 2020. So, a question's gonna come up, why would Woodbury County forward $1 million to those seven counties above and beyond a 25% reserve level? Answer, they anticipate at the end of FY 2020, having $874,000 over and above the 25% statutory level. None of those seven counties want Woodbury County taxpayers to be able to be subsidized and generously given more dollars than is necessary for services. So, we're trying to just have parity with their reserve fund balance. One of the very good things that I think is in here, is that they will go through a reconciliation process. For example, right now, they anticipate $874,000, well, what if at the end of FY 2020, they only have $400,000? It would have been unfair for Woodbury to have contributed a million if they have less than half of what they anticipated, so we will do a reconciliation at the end of that year, in order to make sure that on a per-capita basis, we have equal contributions. The other things that you'll notice are that they will determine personnel needs prior to April 1st of 2019, again, a reason that this is effective July 1st of 2019. And there's been much discussion on discretionary services, or services that are not core services, and so they will need to make application, and that's in this MOU, by October 31st. and so they will need to make application, and that's in this MOU, by October 31st in order to have approval. So that's sort of the highlight of the MOU and the stipulations therein. Woodbury County will be in an interesting position, because with signing this, Woodbury County will be a Rolling Hills Governance Board member as of July 1st of 2019, as long as the provisions of this MOU are set, and I also want to reference DHS Commission minutes that were recently published that stated unequivocally that there is no, nothing in code that prevents Woodbury County from leaving a region and joining another, which I think is good clarification, so those are my remarks, Mr. Chair.
I would just add that it's explicitly stated in code rather than nothing being against it.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
Any other comments on this or questions? I know, I was kind of questioning the potential pitfalls of maybe not having a 2080 agreement done by the 29th for our current region partnership, the ability to actually levy that 1 million and not have the current Sioux Rivers region somehow decide to spend all our money as a two-to-one vote against us, you know, is there anything providing for that kind of what if? That's...
I think that's something that is going to be yet another reason that it's imperative, since we have withdrawn from the prior 2080 and it's clear there is no governing document now, that a new one is crafted to protect that money going forward on behalf of taxpayers and mental health services, and that's what this is about. You're exactly right, if that money were to be forwarded, the past 2080 that's no longer applicable or governable would put taxpayers and mental health services at jeopardy.
The reason I bring that up, you know, my trust level with the current CEO and everybody involved up there is about as low as can be, you know, and I just fear this, you know, potential to come up with emergency funding needs and using up all the, you know, reserve balances and so they don't have to divvy it back to us so that we don't have that million dollars, but, go ahead.
Taylor Goodman, Taxpayers Research Council, we share the same fears that you do Supervisor Raddig, Supervisor Taylor was nice enough to come and talk to a small portion of my group for lunch, we had a good discussion about the possibility of a new or amended 2080 with this last year in Sioux Rivers, and we hope that one gets drafted either by the three involved or if DHS has to come in and make sure it's done, and that's something we would support too, 'cause as you were saying Supervisor Raddig, there's a lot of unknowns that could possibly harm Woodbury County taxpayers, so just wanted to share our approval of getting that new 2080, so, thanks, guys.
Sounds good, thank you, Taylor, and again, I'll reiterate, in the last meeting in the region, I had brought up the need for a new 2080 agreement, it was basically head in the sand, we don't need that, we'll operate under this one, but again, we've already left that one, because obviously the lack of trust and comfort with that, and with that, we have a motion to second, any other comments or questions? So, Raddig had moved, Taylor had seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes four to one. Now, 10B, we have the approval of funding of 15,000 at a captain sponsorship level for the commissioning of the USS Sioux City using gaming revenues. You want to motion first or you want to just take it?
I'll give a little background if that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
I won't belabor, I think everyone knows the significance of the new USS Sioux City, the Navy's newest warship built in Marinette, Wisconsin, and an LCS ship, all of the technology and the pride that I think that it'll represent for our largest city and for Woodbury County. I had reached out, no one had reached out to me or to us, but I wanted to see if this is something that we can participate in, not only as a county that I believe supports a great military service, including our Veteran Affairs and others, but the rich traditions in our area that are interwoven into the very fabric of our building that we celebrated last week, and so with that, I would just highlight a couple of different things, Annapolis and Sioux City have jointly committed to establishing a legacy fund, some of the proceeds from the commissioning will go to that legacy fund, now where do those ultimately go? Those go to the sons and daughters of those who are serving, apart from their children for some time, and go to scholarships so that they can ultimately go to school in a college environment. It was christened on January 30th, 2016 by ship sponsor Mrs. Mary Winnefeld, I know some of you have personally met the Winnefelds, wife of the former Vice Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, and so with that, I, I hope this is something that we can be involved in, I know we're typically involved when there's a collaboration of communities and there's a lot more private dollars that are much higher than this, but I think this is something, the city of Sioux City is in, I believe, at 50,000, I know one of the donors, private donors is at 100,000, I think 15,000 is an appropriate level to come in at, so with that, I would move funding 15,000 at a captain sponsorship level for the commissioning through the use of gaming revenues.
I'll second it. Now, I do wonder now that, can they get us priority seating for five since we're at 15,000, you know, that...
I actually think that that's, if you combine the captain and the commander...
There you go, then we get six.
Right.
Really would be more like a major level if they don't have that.
Yeah.
Right.
We picked a number that there isn't a level for.
That's right.
That was my question, I, I'm all for doing it, but I just, I could tell why it said 15,000 captain's level, captain's level is 10,000.
Right, I didn't have, I didn't have a middle ground, so I was trying to kind of judge between the city's contribution and ours what might be.
Do we get to boss around the people that donated at commander level? I'm just wondering.
I'll, I'll make sure that that request is known and the originator of that request as well.
You can leave that part out. So, a motion by Taylor, second by Raddig, any other further discussion on this, go ahead.
Yes, it mentions invitations for commissioning and reception, being as I don't assume all five members or any of us would, would actually attend, that I know of, is there, is that limited, is that something that in goodwill we could give to sponsor some visitors or people from the community to go and, and represent their area?
Yeah, I, I think that that, you know, we could see if there are those who may attend from this board, and if not, if there's extras, I think that that would be a, a novel and a good idea, just to, you know, especially if someone is able to make it out there who has either a service connection or...
Funding level's fine on that, 15?
Yes, gaming revenues.
Do we have an estimated date on this event?
The fall.
The fall.
I know that sounds very wide open, but I asked that same question, and some of it's dependent upon a whole lot of other things than just funding and the LCS being stood up.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Let's see, so 10C, we got the approval of proclamation recognizing May as National Mental Health Month, and we're going to have Jeremy read that first there, or said some minor changes from the homework on that, correct?
Right, so this is a fresh off the press...
Listen, listen carefully if you don't want any of this as part of National Health Month.
So we, Supervisor Chairman DeWitt and I had a chance to attend Suleman Mental Health Conference and learn more not only about the challenges with mental health, sometimes the stigma, but also the, the people who provide services and for whom Mental Health Awareness Month is really about, and so the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas there is a need to recognize that mental illness affects the lives of many of our citizens and residents of all ages and sectors, and whereas mental healthness will strike one of four adults, about 2 in 10 children live with a serious mental or emotional disorder regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, or economic status, and whereas people who have mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives amid the help of Suleman Mental Health Center designated as the Community Mental Health Center in Woodbury County, and whereas an estimated 2/3rds of adults and 1/2rds of children with diagnosable mental health disorders are not receiving the help they need, and whereas stigma continues to be the single most significant barrier to people getting the help they need, and whereas mental health awareness helps individuals avoid the significant consequences of treated anxiety, depression, and stress, and whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illnesses and addictive disorders to American businesses, government, and families continues to grow, and whereas disparities in mental health can be reduced by improving community outreach and engagement, which ensures competent care for diverse communities, and whereas positive mental health fosters self-esteem, promotes personal happiness and effectiveness, and whereas good mental health helps prevent community violence, abuse, and family instability, and whereas the Woodbury County Supervisors observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness, now therefore on behalf of Rocky DeWitt, as chairperson of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors of the County of Woodbury, Iowa, on behalf of the entire county and staff, hereby proclaim this May 2018 as National Mental Health Awareness Month, urges all citizens to become involved to increase awareness and understanding of the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people who have mental illnesses. With that, I would move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young, anyone else would you like to comment on it too? Comment?
My name is Sheila Martin, I am the Chief Executive Officer at Suleman Mental Health Center here in Sioux City, Iowa, I want to thank you for choosing to support Mental Health Awareness Month, each year, millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental illness, thank you to Woodbury County Supervisors for raising awareness of mental health as we continue to fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for policies that support people with mental illness and their families, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on that? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero, number 11 with Building Services Kenny Schmitz, approval of CMBA Architects Dorothy Pico Nature Center Mechanical and Control System improvements and roof upgrade proposal in the amount of $42,250.
The item before you is an action item for approval of CMBA Architects' design and specifications for the HVAC repairs and upgrades and the roof replacement at Dorothy Pico Nature Center in the amount of $42,500, excuse me, $42,250 from CIP 9107-16.
I would move it, second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabon, any other comments or questions? I'll probably vote against, no offense, it's just to vote against the project initially, so...
We will have to come back and, yes, vote for, we'll have to set a hearing date and get approval to send out for bids yet, so yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those that say are opposed, say nay, that's me, nay. Passes four to one. Thank you, Kenny. Number 12A from Secondary Roads, receive and consider quotes for supply of calcium or magnesium chloride for dust control. How much does that salt cost us?
One cent cheaper than last year.
Hey, that's a good deal.
We received two quotations, the first one from Mark's Distribution for the 7/10 of a gallon per lineal foot application, 84 cents per lineal foot, for the half gallon application, we sometimes use that later in the season or for a second application, 0.6, or 67 cents per lineal foot. We also received a quotation from Jericho Services of Indianola, Iowa, they bid 98 cents per foot for the 7/10 of a gallon per lineal foot application, 68 cents for the half gallon per lineal foot, so, the approximate amount is 60,000 feet, that's for our standard dust control program this year, then we also had the same quote of 84 and 98 cents for the detoured hall roads that we need to treat this year. So I'd recommend award of the quotations to Mark's Distribution of Sioux City, Iowa.
I would move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddig, second by Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And here, Rocky, but we'll just assume that was an aye, it will go five, zero, passes. 12B, approve contract and bond for project number SDPS CO97134-5E97.
This is a contract with Cedar Valley Corporation for the Portland Cement Concrete Overlay of County Road D-54 from Highway, Iowa Highway 31 to County Route L-27, I recommend approval of the contract for $2,354,844.71.
I'll move it, second. Motion by Raddig, second by Taylor, any other discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to number 13, reports on committee meetings.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So we had, I mentioned Mental Health Conference, gave some opening remarks as well as Supervisor DeWitt, Linda Kalin did a fabulous job, as she always does, head of the Iowa Poison Control Center, in talking about the opioid addiction and really how, whether it's mental health or other issues that are being dealt with, whether it's pain or family issues or struggles, that oftentimes people will help medicate themselves in a variety of ways appropriately and inappropriately, and just how rampant, I know this board has looked at that issue previously, but I think it's a very, very scary time, just talked about the distribution and how oftentimes those who are getting prescriptions outside of the regular market don't even know what's in there, and don't even know, those who are dealing in such addictive substances don't know either, and gave some of the sad recent history here in Iowa on K2 and things that are, were otherwise sold legally and had fatal consequences, including to one young man in our own community, so, very sad, somewhat dark as far as the reality that's out there, but also I think we are blessed having the online center here, the toxicologists and pharmacists and all those who work, I'm probably going to get the number wrong, but I think that they receive 35,000 calls a year, many of them from the hospitals that are wanting the information fast and that expertise, so in addition to many of the other presentations and providers that were there, that was a, that was a good thing. The other one I wanted to just mention is a law enforcement memorial, I think Woodbury County as well as Sioux City both stand proud, proudly of those who have given their lives, and fortunately, we did not have one that we needed to add to that memorial out there, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had the Conservation Board meeting last week, it was a real good meeting, they're in the process of redoing their bylaws and since it hasn't been done, I, one of them said 18 years, the other one said 28 years since it's been updated, so I think it's probably overdue, and, but it was a very good meeting, and one of the discussions came up about Supervisor versus the Board of Conservation on the Dorothy Pico and stuff, and I think he's been in contact with you, Josh, and I think now they've got it pretty well clear, and it was cleared up a little bit more from me even, but it was a very good meeting, and we got to sit at one of the new cabins down at Snyder's Bend, and if anybody's looking for a place to rent a place for a night or a weekend, it's quite the facilities down there.
Those are pretty nice facilities, you could probably stay there a few months. You could probably stay there a few months if you wanted. If you get really in trouble, I don't know.
95 bucks a night. Go ahead.
Matthew?
I had a SIMCO meeting, nothing that was maybe out of the ordinary other than a discussion on, you know, funding upcoming for the potential new CERTS facility. Mayor Winkle expressed some concerns about that moving forward. SIMCO feels as though that CERTS is probably in one of its best positions it's ever been though, moving forward, even getting reimbursed less from Medicare. So, that was the main discussion point.
Was the consensus still to go forward because I know we're one of the only COGS to not have a central...
So, it's kind of interesting because the Executive Committee and the CERTS are separate. So, the Executive Committee can only advise them to be cautious in moving forward.
Okay, so that's what happened.
Yeah.
So, no other committee meetings unless, Rocky, you got any over there? I think there's no any citizen concerns. Item 14.
I want to inform the board that we received notification this week that we are now a high-risk grantee for the Department of Justice grants. It's taken us several years to get there and it will take us several years to get away from it. Has to do with the, it was findings in the audit and those three findings are basically because of the software that we use, the different, different types that we use and we're trying to get on one set of software. And that's what the issue is. And it, it's just going to take a while to get there and mostly what the, what that's going to amount to is some additional monitoring, additional questions that they'll be asking during the grant process. Michelle, what do we get from the Department of Justice about, is it just the SCAT grant or whatever it is for $80,000 or...
There's a couple of grants with the Sheriff's Office. We also received some Department of Justice funding from the Attorney's Office, but that's Sioux City that is the grant administrator for those grants. It's around $80,000 to $90,000. Up to this point, we've got another month and a half or so, so it'll increase a little bit.
Michelle's been trying to answer what their concerns are, but we really haven't made any progress until, and I don't think we will until the software is converted.
Did you get that on your birthday or...
No, it was after.
Well, it's a happy birthday to our auditor.
Thank you.
Once we have that in place, there's a monitoring period before we are removed from that.
We'll be in constant contact with them as we go through that. Sounds like we're going to be pen pals for a long time. Trying to deal with them, it's, it's difficult, it really is. We asked our independent auditor for help on it and he just says the goal is unattainable until we change. So, that's what we're going to have to deal with.
Are there any sort of...
Not yet, but it could get there. I mean, to a point where they wouldn't award the money, you know, but I think if you're making a good faith effort to deal with the issues, I think we'll be okay.
Kind of like an adopt a bureaucrat program, huh?
Right.
Any other...
Just one question, not to open up a whole discussion, but is there anything, Joshua, as far as your concerns on that threshold with conservation that we know of in other counties that there's language that stipulates who is responsible for what? Because I know Sulaan District Health, it's clearly stated, anything above $2,000, I think it is, Kenny's not here right now, but is ours, anything less is theirs. Do you know if that's the case elsewhere?
Yeah, it is something they've looked into in the last couple of weeks. Excuse me. It's not so much a dollar level as it is the purpose of the building. The Board of Supervisors are responsible for providing offices for the Conservation Board, and since the Dorothy Pico Nature Center houses those offices, it's correctly expended from the Board of Supervisors. If it were strictly a county park without the, containing the offices of the Conservation Board, then it's something that should come directly from the Conservation Board, be bid out by the Conservation Board. And Chapter 350 that deals with the Conservation Board is, it could be more clear, but it does have quite a bit of guidance as far as delineating the roles. So I think that we have a good understanding now, but it, a lot of times we aren't involved in conservation projects because they're not specifically related to the Nature Center. So that just, on the one hand, the Board of Supervisors controls the budget side of it and allocates the funding, usually during budget time, but then they'll go out and bid out the project and it doesn't need to come back here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board concerns? I have a couple I want to bring up. The open house for the Anthem Fire Department, do we have a majority of people planning to be there?
I'm hoping to go.
So you're hoping to go?
Yeah.
I want to go, but it's a Saturday, so I don't believe I'll be able to make it. I'll have to double check and see if I asked it off, but I do think it'd be awesome if we had our own cornhole team, like County Supervisor Cornhole Team. I think we would dominate. I'm pretty competitive on that, so.
Athletic?
I'm not positive, but I was thinking of going, too.
Okay. Well, let's, let's publish notice just in case we have a majority on that. That is May 26th, noon to two, in Anthem. Also, SHIP has a invite for attending a meeting with Indian Health Services on June 1st, 2018, to discuss the need for a detox facility. I was wondering if anyone would be able to go there from the board?
I'm going to try to present.
Okay.
Will you bring back her report if you do?
Absolutely.
All right. So we'll be sending Chairman, or, no, sorry, Supervisor Young, and he will bring back a report.
It will be as long as the event.
All right. It's an hour-long report we're expecting. Anybody else? Seeing no others, we're adjourned.